All right, we'll get started. A call meeting to order. This is our regular city council work session for Monday, October 3rd. It's 10 o'clock. And I'd like to welcome everybody that is watching us virtually. One thing I did want to mention is we have had discussions with some citizens about having a work session agenda item discussing some incidences at our golf course. We are going to have that discussion item on our work session on October 17th. We've had some personnel issues that they're having to deal with, that we want to make sure we have the right people here to discuss that item and be able to answer all our questions, get a good information. So we want to make sure we have the right components in place before we discuss that. I apologize to anybody that is expecting us to talk about that today, but we want to make sure we have good information. All right, starting off with discussion item A, Stormwater Utility Fee Study, Contract Award Recommendation, and this is Public Works Manager Jim Scheid.
Yeah, good morning, Council. And yeah, great time to talk about stormwater after it rained all weekend, right? So, some of our storm water system throughout town, especially in the old parts of town, is definitely aging and nearing the end of life. And as development has occurred throughout downtown and the outskirts of town, our storm drain systems often patch together, and the existing infrastructure is often smaller than what's added. And so it leads to capacity issues. We see that definitely downtown the most. So the capacity issues paired with some of the aging infrastructure really leads us into some pending large-scale projects in stormwater. And we do have a stormwater master plan that was done in 2009, and that identified many of the bigger-scale projects that, and many of them in the master plan, we have addressed and have, in a way, corrected. Other ones have been tabled just due to the sheer scale of those projects.
Can I ask a question? Sorry to bother you, but on this, the master plan for the storm drain system, is that available on the internet?
You know, I am not sure if that's on our website or not.
Yes, on engineering.
Okay, through engineering.
Because I have an issue that I'll bring up later on in discussion concerning that.
Also, CDPHE is who our, the city's MS for Stormwater Permit is managed through, and increasing requirements for inspections on existing infrastructure and new development is also having an impact on our stormwater system. So, to start the process of how do we handle this system long-term, we're recommending that we start with this study. So this is hiring a consultant to do a study on how other municipalities similar to the city of Montrose have implemented fees associated with stormwater to fund stormwater-related maintenance, master plans, and general capital projects. So this consultant, and we're recommending to Corallo. Corallo would evaluate the information we have, starting with our master plan and the financial system that we use for utility billing. Compare it to other light communities, to Montrose, within Colorado and outside of Colorado, but mostly looking at Western Slope-style communities in Colorado, and generate options for what a fee could be. So, what does that mean for residential customers in Montrose, commercial downtown district, things like that? Giving us options of what has been done in other cities to generate revenue. And all of these options would offer a structure for each type of contributor, and also give us an estimated revenue based on those options. So, option 1, 2, 3, and kind of what the different revenues would be expected from each of those, helping to supplement, again, the maintenance and operation, capital projects, and master plan development. So, upon authorization of this contract, we would begin work this year, and a final report and implementation options to be presented to Council in about April of next year. And so we did issue an RFP for this contract. Again, this is the study phase of this, this is not the implementation. This is only generating those options, reviewing, again, what other municipalities do and how it's worked in others, giving us kind of those options. So this is what I call a study phase. The next phase would be the implementation phase, and that's what would be proposed to Council probably in April, I'm guessing, right now. So anyway, for the study phase, we did issue an RFP for this service, and we received three bids. We are recommending award to Corallo. They were the lowest-cost option, but also had quite a few qualifications that were superior to everybody else. And we actually do work with Corallo currently on our wastewater treatment plant on unrelated projects there, but Dave Breeze has said great things about Corallo, and they have local representation, so very easy to work with. So, with that, we are recommending award to Corallo in the amount of $54,404 for this study phase of stormwater utility fee. So with that, I would answer any questions?
I have some questions, and maybe I'm asking questions that the study is meant to answer, but remind me, and the public, we have a water and sewer fund. So if I receive my water, it comes from Project 7, but if I receive my water through the city of Montrose, I'm paying the city of Montrose for my water. If I'm flushing my toilets and draining my bathtubs, I'm paying a sewer fee. So, is water and sewer one fund for us, or are they two separate funds?
They're two separate funds.
They're two separate funds?
Yep.
And we currently don't have a stormwater fund, and this would look at possibly creating one?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Making sure I'm following along.
Yep.
Okay, and I guess the study will answer who, how much would those fees be and who would pay them? Because unlike water, it's very clear if you have a water tap for the city of Montrose or your house is hooked up to the city of Montrose sewer, it's really clear that you incur those fees for those services. And I suppose this study is meant to generate information for us about, well, who would pay a stormwater fee?
Exactly, yep. And how much, you know? I kind of envision it being separated between residential, commercial, business district, those kind of lines, and then different fee structures based on that. But that's what we need this study for, is to kind of give us those options. How has it been done in other places? What was successful? What did other people learn the hard way, kind of learning from that? Because, yeah, what the rate is and how it's implemented, I guess that's what we don't know yet.
Okay, great, thanks.
On page 8 of our stormwater master plan, it shows that we have six major drainage basins, and I know some of these are larger scale than others. So would this be a kind of a scaled program based on which of the major drainages you're in?
No, it would be based on how you contribute to the system. So, it could be based on impervious area of your lot. So it's not so much what basin you're in, but how you're contributing to it.
So a larger parking lot, like a big box store, would have a larger contributing factor than some mom-and-pop store downtown or residential neighborhood?
Yes, likely, yep.
When you're looking at your residential neighborhoods, you may have areas that you really don't have runoff. How do you determine how you're going to break that down?
You know, that's something unknown also right now. I think that's where we'd look for examples of how it's been done in other areas. I think residential's probably, it seems to me to be kind of universal, right? Residential is residential, but again, that'd be something we'd ask of Corallo and kind of their experience in that study of how others have done it, to see if there are differences in residential, you know, contributors.
Would you be looking, would they be looking also at, somebody goes in to do a development for a residential area, would you be looking at that developer picking up some of that charge as part of the development process?
Yeah, we don't know yet, but likely not. I would think it would be an ongoing, not a single point.
Yeah, it's really not.
Oh, thanks. It's not an impact fee-type thing, but that's why we need the consultants. I've done, I've set a couple of these up in other states, and they're all pretty standard. There's only a few ways to do it, but we wanted to get a consultant that's worked with Colorado communities, because every state's different, and just the water issues are different. The only difference with residential that I'm aware of, just from past practice, would be if you have a residential neighborhood that doesn't have curb and gutter, and one residential neighborhood does have curb and gutter. And so if their runoff at your house stays in your yard completely and never runs off, that's different than one that is all driveway and flows right down into the curb and gutter. But the good thing about hiring a consultant that's knowledgeable in this area is that they would be the ones to go out and look at every piece of property, look at our entire community, spend the time to talk with people, and it takes that burden off of us. There's just no way to do that as a council or staff. And to have a third-party consultant with that knowledge and expertise is really important. So there are a lot of these questions we won't be able to answer today. That would be the role of the consultant, as far as the options. But just big picture, you know, and it's everything we've talked about at a prior budget planning session, that's why the $50,000 was dropped into the 22 budget under professional services in the street cleaning budget, I believe. It'll carry over. We'll have half done this year and half done next year, so we have dropped, carried that half of it over into next year. And then we'll be able to answer all these questions, and the consultants will be talking with Council and community members and businesses. And there's always exemptions and credits, and there's all these, it's usually a pretty complicated scenario when you get all said and done, because, you know, churches and schools want exemptions. Downtown's really unique. It has a bunch of buildings connected to each other versus a big box store that's standalone. And hopefully, there's not any of these left, but sometimes there's rooftop drains that go into the sanitary sewer in your historic buildings. That's also part of this study. So there's just a lot of information we're going to learn for our community.
I just have a little caveat to that. What about the subdivisions that actually drain into the water ditches?
Yeah, so all that.
That has a big impact, so.
All that would be looked at by the consultant. They would analyze every piece of property in the entire city limits.
And just for the public information, if you go to our city of Montrose website, and the far-right tab, Department Services, you could pull, go to Engineering, and if you pull down the Engineering Department Service tab, that Water Master Plan is one of the first thing in our Water Master Plans. So it's really easy to find. We have the Storm Drain Master Plan, the Water Master Plan, Sewer Master Plan, all of them are right there for the public. So if you want to access those, those are really available.
Will they be taking, I don't know that we have very many, but will they be including residential districts that are just outside the city limits that may drain into us?
No, we wouldn't have jurisdiction outside of the city limits. But we could talk to the county.
No, but if those areas were flowing into the city, it is storm drain stuff that we're going to have to deal with.
I've never had to approach that issue, but we'll look at that.
I'm sorry, I brought it up.
It sounds like, it sounds like a very dangerous situation to talk about, but we'll definitely look at that. Nobody's brought that idea up yet. This is a really good webpage. I was just glancing at it. It's really good for the public to be able to go on there, so check that, Ed, if you can. It looks really good.
Lot of information on there.
Yeah. And, oh, sorry, I was just going to say, why are we doing this in general? Is any chance I get to blame the federal government? I like to do that, and so this is one of those specific things. So the stormwater regulations, the burdens placed on the municipality over the last decade, and are going to continue to get more and more strict by the federal government, and then that's passed on down through the states and then to the cities. And so what we used to do 50 years ago is just not allowable anymore. Scott's done a great job. He has some staff members. And then our street cleaning's all tied in, our VAC truck cleaning out the storm sewer systems, all of that's tied in there. But even for like new developments, they have to do stormwater mitigation plans, they have to make sure that the runoff from their construction site doesn't contaminate the watershed. So there's all rules and regulations that people in the community might say, well, we didn't do it that way 30, 40 years ago. That's because the regulations have changed. And unfortunately, those are all unfunded mandates placed on the cities, so that's why we're all looking at this.
Sounds like this is a great opportunity for us to answer a lot of the questions that we have, and because like they say, you don't know what you don't know. And this will give us an opportunity to kind of fill those informational gaps.
And also, I would like to introduce Nick Pridey, he's our Street Superintendent. He's, will be very involved with this study and the potential future implementation of it, and he will be the one introducing this item at the council meeting on October 18th, as I won't be here. So, Nick, Council, Council's Nick.
All right, are there any other questions for Mr. Scheid? In that case, we'll move on to item B, Contract Award Recommendation for Safeguarding a Historic Power Plant. And this is also Jim Scheid.
Yes, thank you. So this contract is to secure the structure formerly known as the Bullock Power Plant. So this would be boarding up all of the existing doors, windows, all penetrations through the exterior of the building, on all levels too. So that actually becomes quite complicated as you start to get on the higher levels of that building. As we've been reviewing the site and the assessments that have been done, we're noticing we need to protect the building from elements, wildlife, rain. And we also need to barricade and secure the building to prevent the spread of hazardous materials that could be present in the building, namely asbestos. And due to the presence of these materials and the location of the asbestos, it's required this work be done by a licensed asbestos contractor. And that just kind of heightens the level of difficulty and the complication of getting that contractor. This contract we're talking about today, though, does not include the abatement of any asbestos. That will likely be part of a much larger effort in the future on the site and the building. This is primarily just closing up and securing the building itself. Other improvements you may notice in the area, we are going to be fixing up some of the fence that surrounds the site. It's actually in decent shape as it is, but just needs a little bit of repair, some additional signage around the site also, kind of just notifying of no trespassing private property, things like that. And that is not part of this contract. That is, that would be separate. And so moving forward, next steps would likely be further assessments of the site and facility. We do have several of them now, but needing those updated and a little more thorough. So likely be some more assessments needed, and helping us to understand what contaminants are there and to what extent. Ultimately leading us to a generation of a remediation plan, and then hopefully grant funding through that process. So we're a ways from that now, but step one is getting the boarding, or getting the building boarded up and secured. And we did receive three quotes for this work, and we are recommending award to Orion Environmental with a contingency of 15% added on that, as this is a, it's difficult to know what we're getting into at this point. Hopefully, hopefully there aren't any unknowns, but the estimate from Orion was $64,575, and we are requesting a 15% contingency on top of that. You look like you have a question.
Yeah, I do. The purpose of us restoring this building, what are we going to use it for, and how does it benefit the community? And when was it declared a historical landmark?
Well, so I think, I can start with the first one. What are we going to do with the building? So, I think right now, there's lots of ideas and options out there. Nothing's necessarily been committed to as far as a future project of the site, but I think it has potential to be redeveloped into many, many things. But the reason why we need to go through this process is because we can get grant funding to remediate it. So it really can't be used for anything until it's remediated, the site and the building. So that's just the start of that process. What it could be in the future, I think there's been lots of discussions about what it could be, a commercial use, or I think several ideas, right?
Yeah, I was just curious, based on the fact that there's a bunch of taxpayer dollars going into it, and as well as grant funding, that we're seeking to restore this building. And I know that we need a lot of this information even to tear it down, if we were to do that. And I don't know whether it can be done or not, and that area be put to better use. So I was just curious as to, you know, purpose.
Yeah, I think this, this contract shows, if we were applying for a grant, shows commitment to the project and actually makes us a much better grant applicant. I think by investing these dollars in securing the building, that, I think that makes our grant application much stronger. And also getting through these assessments and remediation plan, I think those are part of it. We potentially could get grant funding for those as well. But getting that plan established, I think, makes us a very strong grant applicant for remediation of the site. And at this point, we don't really even know what that means, to what extent yet, until we get more of these assessments done. But securing of the building, I think, is a first step and shows commitment on our end for a future grant application.
We need to protect the community, and so securing the building is a good idea.
It is, yep, yep.
Well, and it's protecting the asset, too.
Exactly. Yeah, it kind of goes both ways, right? We want to protect the building. It's been open for many years, so it needs to be protected as well, yep.
Brownfield grants are, we've already had a Phase 1 brownfield for this site?
And Phase 2.
And a Phase 2.
Yep. But they weren't, weren't, I almost say complete, they probably need to go more extensive with those assessments, just to better understand the whole site. So there was assessments done, level of Phase 2, but we just need to continue that. I think there's more to be learned there before we can really be a, before we can really develop a good remediation plan.
We want to be real good stewards of that property, make sure we're actually mitigating all of the hazards that are there.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and to understand the cost to, again, apply for a grant, so that we know what we're applying for, right? Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Jim?
I'm going to also introduce you to Mark Armstrong, if you don't know him. So he will be introducing this item at the October 18th council meeting, as I won't be here, so.
We're going to save the really hard questions for Mark.
Yeah.
Just to make it fun for you. All right.
Cut out on all the hard ones.
That's right, yeah. I just introduce, and then I'm walking away, yep.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to item C, the 2023 City Council Meeting Schedule, and City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I think this is on. As we transitioned into the last quarter of this year, we started looking at the calendar for next year and discovered that we have conflicts with the first four work sessions of the year. Three of them fall on holidays. So our current protocol is to reschedule the work session that falls on the holiday to the Tuesday following, which is also the regular meeting day. So we wanted to confirm that Council wanted to continue with that practice. And then we also determined that July 4th falls on a city council meeting Tuesday. So we would like some input from City Council on what you would like to do with that date.
I'll take the easy one.
Yeah, sure. Put work sessions at 10:00 a.m. the same morning as the city council meetings on Tuesday. That's easy. I think so.
Yep, our current practice, I think, is working really well for us. As far as the 4th of July, that I would have no problem with shifting the actual council meeting to Monday, the 3rd, doing it all on one day again, just shifting it by that one day. I mean, I don't plan on being out of town. How about you all?
Sounds good to me. I don't disagree, but I might recommend that we, whenever we get to the agenda items, that it's not something that might require a lot of participation from the community based on the fact that that is a holiday weekend, and there'll be people out camping and stuff. So that perhaps if we do a council meeting that day and a review, that it be short or simple, and something that might require a lot of discussion, move to another council meeting date.
In that case, I mean, should we cancel it? I mean, I think that our bylaws or our charter allow us to cancel certain meetings. Could we consider, I mean, I'd rather, if we're going to have a light meeting, why have a meeting? I mean.
No, I agree.
I don't disagree with that. It's really hard to tell what's going to be stacked for the agenda that day this far out. It's really hard to kind of see the future that far. So there might be enough items on the agenda where we really need to have a meeting.
Yeah.
To argue devil's advocate.
But I do think that Ed brings up a good point. You know, that's, that, you know, if someone took the 3rd off, that makes a nice four-day weekend to spend with your family or enjoying Colorado, and, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I kind of agree with Barbara that it doesn't make sense to have a meeting just to have a meeting. Otherwise would be a light agenda, why not cancel it? If some emergency of some kind comes up, we can always call a special meeting to deal with a single issue.
Also, if we look at the calendar and you go back to June, we will, just the previous week, have attended four days of the Colorado Municipal League Conference. So we're coming off a week of, you know, two council meetings in June, then a week of professional development. I think we could tentatively try to look at not having a work session or a council meeting on July 3rd, 4th, and should we need to, we can add in a special meeting. I mean, we can reschedule it. We can add it back in pretty easily.
I don't disagree with that. I think it's a fine idea. I think the consensus is to just, on July 3rd and 4th, just cancel the work session and the regular council meeting for the 3rd and 4th.
I concur.
Yes.
I think that would also affect DART, which is usually the first Tuesday of the month. So I'd want to make sure that Bree heard that too, that that gets back to her.
And again, that's, you know, eight months out, so we have plenty of time to notify people.
Okay, thank you. And our Finance Director has a question about this year's council meeting schedule.
I do. Good morning. Doesn't seem like this is working. In December, it seems like, if I remember correctly, that the second meeting might be pretty close to Christmas? And I just need to know, are we having two meetings in December, so I can plan for a supplemental budget ordinance?
That is the 19th and 20th. For me, that's far enough away from Christmas that I'm not worried about it, but.
I am out of town at that time.
I should be here.
I could be here. I may be out of town, but I have no problem with coming in on Zoom. Yeah, I can Zoom in.
Okay, great. I just needed to.
We have a first and a second read of that budget, and we would need a quorum, and it needs to be done before the end of December. So your concern is we don't get ourselves all the way to December and then not have two meetings at which there's a quorum?
Correct.
Okay.
So it sounds like we will have a quorum.
Even if it has to be done by Zoom.
Okay, great, thanks.
Excellent. Is there anything else? Then, general city council discussion.
I'd just like to thank the mayor for his notice of the special meeting on the golf course.
It won't be a special meeting, it'll just be the, our regular work session meeting, but yeah, we're going to make sure we have that discussion. You're very welcome, Ed. I'm happy to do that. Staff comments, invitation from Chief Judge.
I have a comment. Others can expand or expound on this better than I, but I just want to thank the Police Department Chief Hall, all of city staff, Jim, and your people. What a wonderful job was done by everyone with the grand opening of the PD and councilman, councilwoman. I, Biden, I think you did a great job of jumping in and helping out, and I know we all appreciate your help, and all of the staff. It was just a very momentous day, I think, for the city and for the community. I really also think all of our local, our citizens for sure, and all of our local officials, and particularly our colleagues at the county, for showing up in force to support this. I thought it was a really great day. So thank you to everybody for what you did.
Anybody else?
I'll just fill in. I think we got a lot of very positive comments from the folks who did tour the building, and I think that's great.
Yeah, we had a lot of positive comments. We had a lot of great feedback from other law enforcement agencies that are very excited about the idea of being able to cooperate with Montrose PD on training and utilizing some of that space. with Montrose PD on training and utilizing some of that space and having that space available to them. I think we have, we've opened a lot of doors. Anything else? In that case, we'll move on to invitation from Chief Judge for Ben Morris to join the community advisory board for pre-trial services.
I don't have a whole lot to say here, but I wanted to run it all by you all. I tentatively accepted an invitation from Judge Patrick to be on this group. Pre-trial services are services which are designed to help keep people from re-offending while they have a pending case working its way through criminal court, and also to help make sure that they show up for future court dates. It's either a supplement to bond, or it's something that we do in lieu of a secured bond. I think because of my previous work, the chief judge had wanted me to join that group, and I thought it seemed appropriate. But since I'd be representing the city organization this time, I wanted to make sure it was okay with you all.
Speaking for myself, I think that it shows a great deal of dedication to the city for you to be joining these boards and getting the opportunity to fly the flag, as it were, and show the city representation and participation in all these things. So I think it's fantastic.
Sounds good to me. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, as a former or a current member of the judges' review board, I want to thank you for participating because that's how we get the community input into the jobs and responsibilities of the current judges on the bench. And thank you again.
Sure, my pleasure. Chief Hall, did you want to say anything? You're on the board already.
I think you covered it well. We'll see kind of where it goes.
Okay, sure. Then I think that's all I had for that item.
Very good. Acknowledgement of a large donation to the Montrose Animal Shelter. And I'm not sure who's going to be fielded in that one.
Well, I can maybe kick that one off. Again, this will be very short. I had just wanted to tell you, we had a very large donation, $100,000 from.
Much?
$100,000 from the estate of Deborah Hawk. And because it was such a huge gift, I wanted you all to know, first of all, this came in. I believe there may be more to come from her estate. Mr. Magliaro has been handling this for the city. But because we received the check, and he wasn't here, I just thought I'd bring it up and tell you, hey, we've got some good news here. We want to recognize their family with a memorial bench. We're still talking about where to place that. It's either going to be on Main Street or perhaps by the animal shelter itself. So that's the sunshine report, I suppose.
It's always nice to hear that. And this is something we've been kind of keeping an eye on for the last few months because of litigation over. It's nice that it's been resolved and it's all behind us, and we've received that great donation to help our animal shelter.
Have you, have you received the check?
Yes, I have a photocopy of it here.
Just as an aside, I represent Second Chance Humane Society, and a light donation was made to them. So very nice of the estate to.
What a wonderful gift.
Wonderful gift to help our animal population.
Is there, is there anything specific that that funds could use for in relation to the animals or pets or, or whatever?
I believe Chief Hall might be able to speak to that better than I could.
Maybe a canine, canine or something?
You know, actually, yeah, there I go. You know, I think we've, we've already discussed this as far as what the funds could be used for. And, you know, over the past couple of years, especially I think with COVID, we've actually seen a decrease in donations to the animal benefit fund. So this will revolumize that fund, if you will. And everywhere, every year, we take a part of that fund and, and supplement our, our budget for the animal shelter for care of the animals. So I think we just keep the status quo for now and move forward because this is going to really supplement those operations and the care of those animals for, for some time.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments?
I have one. I have a project update on new city hall, former Wells Fargo building. This project is developing quickly, so I thought I'd bring an update to you all and kind of with the, you know, schedule, plan for next steps. Currently, we have our DD level of, of design completed, which is design development, basically 80% level of construction documents are complete. What that allows us to do is to get updated pricing from our contractor, which we have FCI contracted on that project. So they are currently reviewing those DD documents and are going to be providing us with cost updates and see, basically to see where we're at, make sure we're on track with our original estimates for, for the overall project. And then we'll move into construction documents next. Actually, that's what our design team is working on now. With construction documents, that's when we can establish our GMP contract with FCI to begin work. And that's planned for later this month. In October, we should have that, that level completed to where we can begin work. And actually, they are doing some of the demolition work now, or starting this week. One challenge we are up against right now is the roof replacement of the lower portion of the, it's the eastern portion of the building. That's something that we started immediately after we purchased the building, knowing that it was a, a long time to get a roof design and contractor and materials ordered. So we're still in that battle right now. We actually just got an update from our roofing contractor that the insulation is an issue to get on hand, and he's hoping for December. And again, we started this back in March of this year. So it is an issue. He's, he's hopeful of December, that potentially could get pushed out into his latest February. So that's something that we are continuing to keep pressure on the contractors. But that is, that is a concern as that we are, right now, we are on schedule to potentially move into that first level in February. So based on our construction schedule, we are still on that mid-February completion to be able to potentially move into the, the first level. And that's what we've been calling kind of phase one. Phase two included a few items on the first level, but mostly renovation of the second level. That is included in our 2023 budget. So as soon as that budget is approved, I likely would be coming back to council with a, a request to amend our current contracts with, with FCI and BLYTH to include phase two in their, their scope of work.
Which would then include the facade, right?
No, not the facade yet. So currently, though, in contract, we do have conceptual level design with BLYTH to complete the, and they're actually working on that now. I'm hoping we may have a first iteration of that this week. So that, that would give us kind of options again. We'd have kind of maybe two or three different looks, options when it comes to the facade soon. I'm hoping this month for sure. We may even have some of that as early as this week. So that's kind of, that's the next piece. I'm calling that even phase three. But that is something that will get completed in design this year. Construction documents completed in early portion of next year, and potentially starting that work in April, I would say. I think that's a rough timeframe right now. One, just because it'll take us that long to get through design, but also we wouldn't want to start much earlier than that because then we'll be dealing with winter conditions. So if we wait into April, we'll be a little more comfortable in the temperature. And then so thinking that we'll be moved in, in February, March timeframe, and then potentially starting the facade in April. We're already working on kind of a sequence plan for that of how we could approach that project without disrupting the entire exterior of the building. So thinking there's kind of sections that we could do at a time. I'm thinking we can break into three pieces. That way, we can, first off, only close down a portion of the sidewalk at a time and parking area and leaving the rest of it open. But also, the interior offices that are right adjacent to that work will need to be relocated for a short time while we're, you know, cutting through the wall for windows and things like that. So thinking through that sequence of kind of making it into sections, I think of three right now. And that would allow public access in the front and for staff to be able to use the interior of the building. But looking at, you know, roughly April, when we could start that work, and I'd be coming back to council again at that time, once we have pricing on construction documents to amend contracts again, probably, I would guess, in April, beginning work at that time of year and being completed, definitely by the end of the year, I think by fall. Definitely want to avoid the, the winter conditions again. So the goal would be to get that work completed before it starts getting cold. So that's, that's a rough update, and that one's, that one's moving quickly. But I'm happy to answer any, any questions if you have any. And then if not, I'll be coming back to council with a recommendation here probably fairly soon.
Could, could you go over the insulation part again? I didn't quite catch it all.
So the insulation that goes under the roofing is just a material that is very difficult to get.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, we actually dealt with it somewhat on the PD project. But in that, in that area, things aren't getting better and they're hard, it's hard to get. And there's only one source. So it's, we're kind of tied to waiting on when we can get that material.
Yeah, I had an issue like that before, trying to get, some of these older houses here have like a Celgatex insulation that you put down over beams and then hot moppet and tar. And it was very difficult. It took me almost three months, and it had to come out of California for four pieces. So I was just curious, this is not a contractor problem, but a materials-related one.
Right. Yeah, and we're, we're working with a contractor that does work all over the country and does many, many millions of dollars worth of roof every year. They're definitely one of the largest in the country. And so they, they definitely have that pull when it comes to getting materials. Again, they are one of the largest, and they're, even them at that scale are having issues getting material when, when they want it, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome to 2022.
Yep, still dealing with it.
All right. Any other staff? Mr. Murphy, you look like you had a quick update on that.
On the open houses, just a reminder that the open houses for West Main input are this week. So that applies to businesses, motorists, anybody, pedestrians, anybody that uses that corridor, we'd love to hear from you and take a look at where we're going because this is our chance to steer the design. We have one Wednesday night, Thursday midday, and then one in Spanish Thursday afternoon at MADA. If you go to citymontrose.org/westmain, all the detailed times and everything are there. And they're in the Centennial Room, so right behind City Hall.
Except for the one that is at MADA.
Except for the one at MADA. Yep, yep. And then if you can't make it, a lot of the same information we're presenting is online. There's a video kind of running through our presentation. And then they can, there's a form you can fill out right on the website, or you can email me or call me if you'd like to let us know your thoughts.
Very good. We always value public input on all these projects because it helps formulate a lot of our plans to make sure we're doing what the city actually wants us to do. Chief Hall?
Just wanted to give a quick update, too, for when the PD will be fully operational and open. And that includes also traffic on South First, which will be a westbound, one-way only. So October 10th is our target date. Records and detectives and patrol has pretty much moved in now. Thanks to Greg Story and his team for working over the weekend to help facilitate all the IT needs. But October 10th is the target date. We will send out a press release to the community, and then we're, I'm going to work with Jim, and we'll probably put a signboard or two with maybe one of the message trailers on South First, just making sure that our public knows that it is a one-way only now. And then we'll get that opened up on October 10th.
I think that's going to be very important, especially at the intersection here at Cascade, that people need to remember that they can no longer turn west or eastbound on that street.
We've quite a bit of new signage, but I think Blaine's right. We'll, we'll leave up a message board for, you know, a period of time after just to make it become more comfortable, no longer eastbound off of Cascade.
Very good. Any other staff comments? Seeing none, then we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody. We do have an executive session to immediately follow this meeting, so we'll take 15 minutes, let everybody grab a bite of lunch, and then we're moving on that executive session.
Hey, Bill, I have a question. You're.